Ten of those, not one single, and you've got two, two high schoolers with pills.
I believe you.
No, I just went for a day.
Now, before we get started, just to say thank you for the cards and phone calls that I've been getting. It's been more than interesting. We're trying not to go under the ninth. So, yeah, I've done acupuncture, I've done physical therapy, and I've decided that Tracy must be either the, what was it, wasn't the Six Million Dollar, it was something else, or, or Superwoman, because I'm telling you, I can't, they're just absolutely kidding events, and so. Where is, oh, never mind, it just came back, thank you. I'm okay now. City Council meeting for October eighteenth, two thousand and ten, without further order, please remember to time to the kid and ask the landowner for approximately 40 minutes. Please turn off all cell phones and pages from the creation meeting. The city clerk, please hold on.
Mayor Missau?
Uh, here, and.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Snyder?
Here.
Councilman Noeal?
Here.
Councilman Benson?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Councilman Johnson called and said he was stuck at work and will not be coming in tonight.
Councilman McAdams?
Here.
Flashing lights, sir? Thank you, sir. Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a car?
Uh, thank you very much.
Well, the audience, please rise and join in person. Besides this pledge of allegiance, thank you. In the moment of silence, of course.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just real quickly, since you're half normal present, I recently got worked at, um, a, a kid that my daughter graduated with from high school. You know, he's all twenty-three years old, and he went down to City High School to graduate. Um, has been serving over in Afghanistan, and was involved in a horrible, um, mine explosion, and he's lost his leg, and, um, his hand's not looking so good. And it just really hits home. I mean, it's, it's always, you know, it just hurts, and then when you see it on the news and you read it in the paper, it's, it's, you know, somebody that you know, your heart still goes out, and when you find out it's somebody that's been in your house, and then, you know, your kids have grown up with, and, you know, it's right in our own backyard, it really just breaks your heart. So, I'd just like to, uh, you know, put that thought out there, that we just keep the, the kids, the soldiers, you know, the men and women, they're still serving over there in Kuwait, Afghanistan, and all over the, all over the world, that we just keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, please pass your microphone. Bob Bullock?
Jim Lucy?
Martha Ruby from Nine Healthcare?
Jim Goddard?
Mr. Moser?
David Kiba?
Jean Latta?
Joy Adisha?
Kamal Tal?
Yama?
There's Saul Wright?
John Howard, Information Technology?
Karen Keane, Parks and Recreation?
Ray Colm, State Department of Bush Department?
Patricia Abara?
Nia Abara?
Ms. Ryan Coady, American Center for Women's Health Sciences?
The Lock and Shield Police?
Friggin' Morris, Director of Economic Development?
And then the England Deputy City Manager?
How Baker, Deputy City Manager?
And how the City Manager's Office?
Thank you very much. Okay, first item, um, City Manager Jury Flannery, um, Littered Staff, um, which will be pretty easy to identify, if the man's working.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I believe, uh, is a member of the Student, um, Homecoming, uh, Committee, and, uh, the individual is Patricia Abara.
Thank you. Come on forward. Very nice to see you.
Um, I was coming down to apologize on behalf of the Student Council for not involving the council in the parade. We're aware that it's a yearly thing to invite you, and we are very, very sorry. Um, we're going to ensure that next year you guys are invited, and I just wanted to come down and apologize on behalf of the Student Council.
Ms. Snyder, and then Mr. Maria.
Hi, thank you for coming, and I appreciate that you came in and apologized. We just, uh, really, you know, of course, being an Adam City graduate myself, having worn one of those jackets that you've had on for four years, uh, very much want to support Adam City and, you know, feel the pride of being a part of your homecoming parade, and, and certainly willing to help if you need to be helping the future homecoming charities. You're certainly welcome. If you discuss possibly having a member of council assist, if you'd like that, or a member or two. You just let us know what you need to help, because I'm over here for it, so I'm more than happy to help if you need that, and I'm certainly willing to help, that'd be the pleasure of council, so, thank you.
Uh, appreciate coming tonight. Uh, you know, as, as someone that was on, uh, Student Council in high school, uh, I understand that things, you know, slipped through the cracks, and, you know, no harm, you know, no foul. Uh, it was, uh, you know, you're so busy getting the parade lineup set up and all that stuff, and, and it's a great experience for, uh, high school students to know that, and, you know, we'll certainly come and help you later on in life. Um, but yeah, it's just, it, it, no problem, and, uh, thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, you know, keep up the good work in, in school and, uh, in Student Council.
And you know what, these are big fans, we all, and they support, and for us, we just like to support you, so, uh, next person is Ms. Carson. Oh, everybody wants a chance to say hello. You, you have no idea how much it means to us and to everybody around that you would come and even talk to us and say, you know, hey, listen, we, we just, it slipped our minds, you know? That means a lot, and that's going to mean a lot to you as you get older, that you're able to come and say, you know what, I made a mistake. Because we all, well, almost all of us sitting up here will admit to making mistakes. There's a couple that have never made any, but most of us did. Ms. Carson.
All right, just wanted to thank you for coming, and tell you that, uh, no apology necessary. I think council just always wants to be as supportive as we possibly can at all of your events, so, but thank you for coming, and, uh, hopefully you have a, a great homecoming parade.
Ms. DeBens?
Well, thanks for coming, and, uh, I just want to reiterate, like, I guess everybody else has said, we all are in the name of the city. Please just, uh, come to a council meeting, and tell us what you need, and I'm sure we'll, we'll try to help you, so, thanks very much.
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for being here. I too am ready with from Adam City High School, and, um, I understand it was just overlooked, and nothing was done intentionally, and, um, we are always going to be supportive of the high school and school district. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I also want to thank you for coming, but, uh, according to protocol, would you keep your name and address so we can have it on the record, please? Thank you. Yes, um, Patricia Abara, fifty-nine eleven Jackson Court, from City Hall.
Thank you so much for coming. We sure appreciate it. You have to sign with me.
Me too.
Okay, next item, Mrs. Communication, uh, the rosters are made available on table of the entrance, uh, for those who wish to address council on anything that is not an agenda item this evening. Uh, second one is for any action items that might be listed on the agenda except for consent items. When I call your name, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You're reminded each speaker is limited to three minutes. City council is reminded that they are not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions and express concern where appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get the necessary information to solve issues.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a couple of comments?
You can do anything you like, sir, and we're the attorney.
Okay, thank you. Um, just for council's information, uh, tonight, and starting tonight, and henceforth, there will be two sign-up sheets back, uh, on the table for citizens. One sign-up sheet is for citizens communication. The other sign-up sheet, that we thought, in, in discussing this, City Management itself, that it would help the, uh, citizens and council to better, um, appreciate the, the process that we have with these meetings if we have a sign-up sheet for someone that wants to speak on an item that is on the agenda, an action item that is. When I say action item, I'm talking about an ordinance or a resolution that's not on the consent agenda. So, there are two sign-up sheets, so people in the audience are cautioned to be sure they see which sheet they're signing on. One is citizen communication, the other is for any action item other than a consent agenda item. Uh, that way, then we'll have a better appreciation of who wants to speak on it for the right.
Great, thank you for that explanation, sir. Um, the, you know, the, uh, person who signed for it. Um, the two people that'll be coming up is Jim Goddard and Martha Ruby from the Nine Healthcare, and welcome you both. We have a big event coming. We are so excited about it. And really, just before you get started, I am thankful to staff, um, especially, uh, um, Mr. Poderaro, and, uh, to Adam's Fourteen, for really getting in there and putting this together and helping you all out. You're on, sir, I'll need a name and address for the record, and then talk first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jim Goddard, works in Nine Healthcare. I live at two zero seven five Crack Street, Colorado. I also have with me Martha Ruby.
Hi, I'm Martha Ruby. Thank you for having me today. Um, my address is eighty-nine forty-one Cedar Hill Place, Villatrie, Colorado, area one four.
So, we're here to, uh, thank all of you and the city as a whole for your support in what has really become a new model for Nine Healthcare. The family Nine Healthcare debut year in Commerce City in two thousand and eight, so we're about to celebrate our third annual, and we very much appreciate the leadership, the financial support, logistical support, and promotional support that the city has provided to this program. Last year, we saw about thirty-seven hundred people over a two-day period. We're expecting about four thousand this year. We have a promotional partner in Entrovision, both radio and television, and so, uh, it should be a very good affair, and we're, uh, hosting this year at Adam City High School. So, um, I would particularly like to, to thank the mayor and his wife for being there both years, supporting, uh, this program and welcoming visitors. Um, special thanks to Ms. Poderaro, who has provided wonderful leadership this year, stepped right in in his new role, and, uh, is going to make this the best ever family nine healthcare that we've had. So, we welcome you to join us on November sixth and seventh at Adam City High School. We'll start very early in the morning, but you can come if you're pleased. Uh, it will last, um, until afternoon, and, uh, we would love to have you there, welcoming the participants and, uh, seeing the results of this partnership that has been so good for us. I thought I would hand it over to Martha to just talk a little bit about the promotional activities that you're going on.
Jim, and thank you for having me speak to you tonight. Um, my hope with the Nine Healthcare is to help on those promotions and, uh, community organizations to attend our health fair. Like Jim mentioned, we have a great partnership with Entrovision, who owns four Spanish radio stations and two TV stations, so we're working closely with them on recruiting not only volunteers, but also participants. Ms. has been instrumental to, to be great in helping those recruit volunteers. He's done a great job. Um, so, as a family health fair, it's bilingual, so that's why we are covering the bus in Entrovision, as well as the usual support from that channel nine that we get. With Entrovision, we're going to be in their morning show, the Spirit of America, on November second and November fifth. I'm excited about that, as well as the radios and all the different promotions, and the websites and banners on the website. I've also been working with the Mexican consulate, uh, to different grassroots organizations as well, health related and non-health related to the community, inviting participants. We've got more screenings this year. We have, we're earning about the same screens. We have new screens, as usual, at very low cost. Ms. has also been helping, uh, reaching out to the business community here in Commerce City. He distributed in two thousand dollars to businesses here, here in the community, as well as females. You just got to have as far as promotions, I don't know if you have any questions, or Jim wants to add something else?
Well, you're running that word. Okay, you had a perfectly clear three minutes. You get a perfect job. Mr. Maria?
Hi, thanks for being here. Uh, just in terms of, uh, for the people in the room and, or the people watching at home, um, if you'd like to volunteer, can you just give a little information on where you can go to sign up?
Absolutely. Please just visit our website, ninehealthfair.org. That's minimalninehealthfair.org, and there is a way to sign up still. We're looking for volunteers for particular on Sunday.
Great, thank you.
Seems to be it. Um, again, thank you, Mr. Poderaro, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Flannery, for allowing him to spend as much time as he has to make this a successful event. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. We'll report this to you there. Hey, you will. Okay, there's only one set of minutes before council this evening. They're the minutes in the meeting of September twentieth, two thousand and ten. Before voting, I need a motion to allow myself to abstain from voting because of my excuse of absence. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to, um, allow, um, Mayor McCall for voting.
Okay, Mr. Maria?
Take a question.
Second, I have a motion in a second to allow me to abstain, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, the same. Motion passes. I now have a motion, um, to approve the minutes of September twentieth. Mr. McAdams?
Would you approve the minutes of September twentieth?
Ms. Snyder?
Second motion?
Yeah, I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of September twentieth. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, the same. Motion passed. Mr. Benson, did you have a discussion on this, or?
No, that motion passed, right?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, my phone raised some noise over here.
Yes.
Because of the process of turning it off, and nevertheless, it wasn't getting a call, but we keep it with the spirit of our resolution. I've had a five-hour hell ride here.
Right.
Who's this guy? Me? I'm suggesting when we get enough, we have ice cream on Sundays.
Yes, I was, what a wonderful idea.
This is the first five hours.
Okay.
Who do I give this? I think anybody up here on this.
That's your mom.
Yeah. Now, I'm supposed to keep this?
Please, yeah, you gotta, right, you can hear me, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Benson, for your humor and, uh, and taking the blame. Uh, okay, let's see. Consent agendas, next item. There's three items on the consent agenda this evening, which has really been a lot of work from what we've been having. Uh, council is reminded that any of these items can be removed and, and, uh, dealt with separately, uh, if they, they wish. Does anyone wish to remove any of the three items from the agenda? Uh, if not, a moment for a motion. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Ms. Snyder?
Second motion, council seated.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Will this be attorney? Please read the titles.
Title board is eighteen thirty-eight, title reads, an ordinance amending the two thousand and ten budget for the city of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Department of Justice J. Vernon Grant, funds in the amount of sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars for the support of low-cost recreational and delinquency prevention programs for the youth and teens in Commerce City, and the authorization of expenditure thereof. Next one is ordinance eighteen thirty-eight, title reads, an ordinance amending the Commerce City Sales and Use Tax Code as codified in chapter twenty of the Commerce City Advice Municipal Code to provide for amendments deemed necessary for application of the Commerce City Sales and Use Tax Code in the city of Commerce City. Next, resolution twenty ten dash fifty-seven, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City.
That's the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor? Okay, uh, thank you. That has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. The city attorney threw out the title. I'll now request a roll call vote, please. Okay, the vote is, yes, the consent agenda has passed. Uh, we just want to make, I made an error last week. Mr. Bullock wanted to do a change in a commission that he sits on, which is actually outside of our city, which is pretty weird. I had seen that we were handling the board of decisions this week, so I asked him to push it off to this week, which he agreed to do. We're now going to move back to administrative business, which is where he wanted to put it last week. And I've already talked to him that he didn't have any problems. The vote did not have any problems with handling it. But just in case anyone out there says, well, they said we were going to talk about that, excuse your explanation. Um, there's such a public hearing tonight. This one might be a little important. I scheduled it for this evening. It's, uh, open hearing on resolution two thousand and ten dash sixty. Will City Manager Jury Flannery, please invite staff up to review the resolution on the two thousand and eleven budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to invite Mr. Kingenberg up to introduce and present the side.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. The two thousand and eleven budget that has been proposed is a grand total of, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve thousand and some odd dollars. Of that, excuse me, fifty point nine nine is for the general fund. General fund is what pays for the normal operations of the city. That fifty point nine nine is covered by general fund revenues, as well as using some fund balances. We've been blessed with fund balances from previous fat years that, that allows to survive the lean years, and we've been through several lean years, and thankfully, last year, for example, we budgeted to use money from fund balances and transfers, and, uh, we did not have to do that, so our fund balances were preserved. And, uh, right now, I'm giving the report later about two thousand and ten, the two thousand and ten was slightly a year repeated two thousand and nine. We don't have to do that, because we reserves, even though we budgeted that. So, that's really good news. So, this budget as proposed, uh, also proposes to pull some money from fund balances. Uh, we would pull one point nine nine from fleet management, and, uh, about one and a half million from the general fund fund balance for the operations of the city and the general fund. You will also use two point three, almost two point four million of one-time revenues for capital improvement projects. So, uh, overall, this is a healthy budget, and, uh, and happy to recommend it to you. It also includes our capital improvement preservation plan, budget of, uh, almost four point seven million. Most of that is restricted pass-through money that comes from the state or from the county, as well as the two point four million from the general fund that I mentioned earlier. And then for, uh, two thousand and twelve, we have a, a budget plan that is included, again, for planning purposes. That general fund is fifty million, and a grand total is approximately fifty-three point four million for two thousand and twelve. Are there any questions regarding this budget?
Council? Ms. Teeter?
Is this the, um, whole presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
You're finished?
Oh.
Um, I just wanted to know, did anybody receive bonuses this year, with the economy the way it is? Um, I can't remember anybody talking about that.
In the budget, there was a provision for, uh, one-time lump sum payments for some employees that, while it has a small percentage increase, and is typically lower paid employees after four.
What was last year?
You, you may remember, um, in, uh, last year's presentation, uh, entry level and mid-level employees received, depending on where they were, were in that, uh, scale, a percentage and a lump sum, which, you know, I guess you could, stands above us, but it was tied to performance.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, um, also, I do want to just reiterate something, sorry, um, you know, a lot of what we talked about in the budget retreat was, uh, November ballot measures, um, and, and potential effects, and so, that's how we programmed some of our monies, as you recall. We did say we were going to come back in the beginning part of, uh, two thousand and eleven to come back to the council and look at some of those revenues, uh, that we've kind of put in a holding bag to see where we are, and actually have almost like a mini budget retreat, probably in February, March. So, I just want to make sure that everybody remembered that. And, Ms. DeBens?
Yes, uh, I noticed under cap six that, um, says that we recommend the city council actions, open the public hearing on two thousand and eleven budget, but then continue the hearing on November first. Is that what he wants to do, to add to the number?
Yes, sir. That has been the normal practice in the past, of where a public hearing is open, and then continue to a later date to allow the public more time to review the budget and pose questions, if they will.
So, would now be the appropriate time to make that motion?
That's good for you.
We, uh, discussion first in the council. Uh, Mr. Benson's also, okay. Discussion first in the council. That will open it up to the public. Then we'll close this part, and then you can make a motion if you want to, I put your name on hold for that, if that's what you wanted to do. Is that okay? Uh, Mr. Vernon?
Just in conjunction with Councilwoman Teeter's, uh, question, so those, those lump sum increases were for non-executive positions, correct?
That is fair.
Thank you.
And just to point out, uh, my supervisor was stroking out, uh, over the term bonus. We, the city does not provide bonuses for lump sum payments. You know, bonuses that are in the private sector.
Words that get us in trouble. Any, any other questions from the council? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council on this particular matter at this time? Seeing none, um, I would now entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, a resolution two thousand and ten dash sixty to November first, to provide, uh, two thousand and ten, to provide the public time to review the document, and then address council on November first, two thousand and ten, before the final adoption. And, Mr. Benson, you had requested that, you would like to make that motion?
Uh, yes, and, and you asked the varying members of the public that wanted to comment, and I.
Yes, I did, and nobody, nobody argued.
And I, I was so moved.
Okay, Mr. McAdams?
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to continue the public hear, hearing, um, until, uh, November first, uh, of two thousand and ten. Mr. Dale, there's nothing you need to do, right? Because this is just to open it up so people have time.
That's correct, and that would be at six thirty PM November one.
Okay, six thirty PM November. Okay, six thirty P.M. November first. It's been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing. Mister, are you checking with the board?
Just for the public's awareness, copies of the budget are available through the city court of justice, correct? Okay, so I, you know, it's obviously pretty dry if you need something to put to sleep at night, you know. That's, well, except for you, Mister Kingenberg, of course. But, yeah, absolutely, just wanted to let the public know that copies are available to the city.
Mister McEnany, just for your second motion, or did you have a comment?
It was, but I actually would have a little, counsel Miranda's comments, you go ahead and a long discussion with the citizens, speak about recent injuries that's been on the ballot in November. And the thrust of that discussion is that for most of our citizens who are on the wing, members of the society are calling for accountability and reductions in what we call the spend, and yet, I think I can count on two hands, on average, the number of citizens that are present during our budget discussions. And we have no idea, generally, this evening, during our long-term, just to suggest that citizen involvement is not only welcome, but very, very welcome. So definitely take that into view. This is not an act of ours, but if you want to make a vacuum or decisions that you want to make a vacuum here, it was critically needed, so thank you for bringing that up, sir.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to continue it. I'm requesting a voice vote, all those that have favors, you can try by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same, motion passed, this will be November first, six thirty. There's one item on ordinance on second reading, and it's ordinance eighteen twenty-four, ordinance amending the two thousand and ten budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Ordinance eighteen forty-two, ordinance amending the two thousand and ten budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. Counsel has any questions or discussion? And I'm going to say there's, you want to hear this, Ms. Carson? Is it discussion or you want to hear the motion? Okay, you're on, Miss Carson.
You know what, this wasn't new to us, and I called the city manager, Mister Clary, today and told him that the more I thought about this, the more I'm not, what I would say, totally against this. I think where I'm at is I would like to get just a little more information, supporting the idea of what is, what the position is. In the time when we know that most cities are cutting back, I would like to just go forward very carefully and be able to say to citizens that we did have all the information, the facts on hand. I know that risk management performs various duties. I think one of them is evaluating insurance, is that correct? I don't know when the last time we were evaluated, maybe we could get some information like that. And I hate to bring it up at such a late notice, it's just, it's one of those things, they, you know, I came out of the school district, I was very used to the idea of risk management. I don't think it even crossed my mind when it was first grabbed. And then through some discussions with a few fellow residents and some thought, I thought, well, maybe, maybe I should ask for some more information.
I don't know whether it's good, Mister Clary, or Mister Bearden.
Well, at this time, we're certainly open for discussion on the ordinance. I think that city manager's office does have some information to furnish this evening, and I can add some comments regarding the risk management position, but maybe I should hold those comments a little after Mister Clary, or do you want me to leave them on the table?
Okay. I completely, completely understand and respect the position and your comments. I think specifically to me, this position covers so many spectrums, and right now, when there is a claim of any kind, we have a member of the financial staff to handle it. So there's complicating layers that take individuals away from their duties. One of the, one of the questions that was asked was comparable cities. So I sent a list out today with cities that were larger, well, cities that are smaller, and cities of comparable size that have risk management departments. And I think, I think the thought that we presented at the retreat was that we thought we, this one, of all the ones that we recommended, we wanted to bring out sooner rather than later because of just the myriad of issues that a city that's growing like we are faces, whether it's industrial issues, whether it's residential issues with employees and the number of employees that we have, both part-time and full-time, and looking at their well-being and making sure that safety requirements and safety plans are put in place. Departments have to do that, but there isn't the coordination that probably this position would allow for. And so when you look at other cities across the region, they have this type of position to specifically handle those issues, and it typically has housed out of the H.R. department. So I completely understand your comments, council member Carson. And if there's information that is lacking, we'd be happy to find it.
Mister Bearden?
I think it would help council to go through a scenario with you typically when the city receives a claim, whether it be a workers' comp type claim where an injury has occurred on the job, or whether it be another type of liability claim where a city employee is accused of being negligent on the job and causing an injury. Typically, we'll get a written claim form in, and that form is usually from an attorney representing the person that is making claim against the city. Then that, that claim form that we receive then is referred to my office and also to H.R. to review it. Then a decision has to be made, do we need to investigate what the basis of the claim is? Because at this point, we haven't got a lawsuit, we just have a notice of a claim, which is required under the Governmental Immunity Act as well as under the workers' comp provisions. So then at that point, SIRSIA gets involved. SIRSIA then is notified, and then a decision is made, do we hire an outside investigation or are we going to do the investigation in-house? Well, there's where disposition becomes important from the city's point of view, because it's also a cost-saving measure in some respects. Granted, we're paying out funds for a salary, but we're also, if we don't have someone like that on board, we're trying to do an in-house investigation, or in most cases, we hire an outside investigation through SIRSIA to be performed. Then when that investigation is completed, we have a, an investigation that is current, newly accomplished shortly after the incident occurred, rather than waiting for a lawsuit to be filed maybe six months later when things get stale. So it's important that we move immediately on those types of claims so we've got the information. Well, if, under our deductible policy with SIRSIA, we're paying for that investigation out of city funds, not paying for it by insurance because our deductible will normally be, it would have to cover that investigation. So the investigation takes place, then we have a file that is current so that if and when a lawsuit is filed, we're prepared to defend it, and SIRSIA has the same, same feeling. And that also then impacts if we have a risk management. I am fairly confident that it would also help us in dealing with SIRSIA on our insurance premiums. So there are some cost-saving measures. It's not all just paying out for the salary. There are some cost-saving measures that are associated with the risk management. And I think city manager's office is recommending that position, and from my observations, from my office, of the efforts that have been made, all in good faith, by city employees trying to do an in-house investigation, they're usually, could be much better done by someone that is schooled in this area, such as an expert risk manager.
Miss Carson, this is a public hearing, please.
Just from my years with the school district, would this title also include, other than the investigation, safety training programs, policies, things along those areas?
Correct.
Okay.
They probably would work with the emergency operations manager and on different types of first responder type issues, although they wouldn't take the lead out of it. They would coordinate with them.
Okay.
Mister Bullock?
Yes, sir. Today, and I was looking at the agenda, and this risk management just kind of jumped out at me. And I really didn't quite understand risk management. So I looked it up on Wikipedia, and it gives a great definition of what it is, what it does, and what it should do to protect your city and everything, so we really don't have to outsource this. With SIRSIA, we were outsourcing our risk management, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, the first thing that jumped out at me, it says, risk management should create value. Is this program that we're about to implement, is it going to create value for the city without creating a drag on our city funds?
Mister Mayor, members of council, and councilman Bullock, one of the discussions that I had early on in this, in this process, probably back in late July, early August, was, you know, with the risk management position, it's kind of like the Office of Homeland Security. You, if you have a great Office of Homeland Security, you're preventing terrorist strikes maybe on a daily basis, but you don't know what you prevented unless you're tracking it. This is, in a similar light, you don't know all of the accidents you might be preventing unless you track it. And this, this will allow us to track it, this will allow us to implement plans and actually measure what this position is doing. So my, my feeling is, when you look at positions, and I used an example earlier today about the IT person in the police department, you're, you're investing city money, city taxpayer money into a position that should save you money in the long run, whether it's through claims, whether it's through employees risking life and limb on equipment, whatever that might be, it's actually allowing us to absorb money within the city to prevent more expensive costs in the long run.
Also, the other few things that jumped out and just made me stop and think, and I went through the whole risk management principles and was, it be systematic and structured, and be transparent and inclusive, you know, and transparency was one that really got me that, doing any investigation, I know that nothing can be, no information can come out during the investigation, but after any investigation that we had in the city, transparency has got to be the number one thing. So whether we're right, wrong, or different about it, everybody knows what happened and that risk management position be an impartial position that is looking for the welfare of everybody, city, voice, citizens, and everybody alike.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mister Benson?
Yes, this is twenty-four and a half thousand dollars, right? Twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That's a hundred thousand a year. Correct. And you know, other cities are cutting back on employees. All the businesses I know are cutting back on employees, developers are cutting way back on employees. There are seminars on risk management. SIRSIA would give this, send somebody to a week-long seminar, reassign an employee a lesson. I can't tell you what to do, but I voted against this in perjury. And I can't, I cannot see Harry and another person paying a hundred thousand dollars a year to perform this function. And I'm sure we've got somebody on our staff that can go to the seminar and come train in this area and then do it for us. But Harry spending another hundred thousand dollars on another staffers when we're in tight budget crunches, everybody knows, I just can't see it. I voted against it the first time, and I'm sure I'm going to vote against it the second time, too.
Mayor, if I could just address that, and I kind of respect your position, Mr. Benson, and absolutely. All the positions that we looked at this year, as I explained in the retreat, were hard-thought, not fought, but thought, through. And we looked at positions that potentially would save the city revenue by implementing it. So bringing on this position, it actually saves the city untold costs in employee days off, hazardous situations where employees' well-being is at risk, public's well-being is at risk. So this to me is a valid expenditure and a valid investment in the city staff. We've since rebuilt over the last three years, as I mentioned in the retreat, to the point of potentially strangulation. We loosened it just a little bit this year to look at the most oriented positions that we felt were needed. We were not and did not approve all of the requested positions, and did not recommend that to council, and the council preliminarily in September agreed with that concept. Absolutely understand the, the position of expenditure of that amount of money. Salary isn't that much, it's the benefits as well as the salary that are going to that. To me, and in my position, it is a, it's a cost that is worth it, and will be potentially save us in the long run, the cost of, whether it be lawsuits, whether it be days off through injuries, whether it be different types of liabilities that occur, and just putting plants together that right now, our staff is at a limit. And we love to train more, and we do train, but to actually dedicate somebody to this position full-time is something that we felt warranted. If the council doesn't do that, you can, you can cancel it from the budget, and that's your draw, my expectation.
Mister Benson, your second motion is a issue, James, or again?
Yes, I'm just, I agree with the principle here, the need to have somebody looking into, what I'm saying is, can't somebody who's already on our staff be properly trained to do this? I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is something that we might use to make, maybe the senior centers, senior center room or inviting for our senior citizens, maybe open up the kitchen, things like that. That's a lot of money that can be used for other services to the citizens of this community. There's got to be somebody on this staff.
It's, it's an opportunity, Mayor, and councilman Benson, it's as I described the acting position in. the acting position in the police department. If you want to have an officer running the IT division of the police department, where do you want that officer out on the street protecting the public? It's an opportunity cost of where do you want to shift the duties of somebody? And I believe we are a fair role on staff, as far as covering the myriad tasks we do. That's been my opinion, that's been my presentation. Is there somebody that we want to switch off their normal job duties to do this? We could do that, but it's not something I would recommend. Maria.
Mr. Geller, you mentioned that we have traditionally contracted out for those types of investigations. Are you able to provide a ballpark of what those investigations might cost?
It really depends on the complexity of the case, but we have a $50,000 deductible now, and the investigation phase, in general, would eat up most of our deductible. But, of course, that varies. If you've got a simple case that investigation doesn't involve that much in complex issues, then, of course, it wouldn't approach those kinds of numbers. So it really depends on the case, how many people need to be interviewed, how extensive the investigation is. So you just never know until the case comes down to a fight. But we've had cases, especially some of our personnel cases, that involve a lot of interviews. And, of course, a lot of interviews means more time that's involved with conducting the investigation.
Would you say those investigations occur frequently, or?
I think City Manager's Office might be more helpful in this regard than I, but I would say that we probably process, I would say, six to 12 cases a year. Do you think I'm ballparking that?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I would say that I do understand where the concern is raised by Councilwoman Benson, Councilman Benson. Whether, whether good times are good or times are bad, there has to be a certain amount of restraint shown, I think, on the part of the city and what we do with the revenue that we bring in. I personally think that this is a position that is going to pay off in the long run. I think it's a good move on the part of the city to bring this in-house. You know, there has been concerns that this city contracts out too much, that this city employs consultants too much. This is one of the things that I think falls under that category of us bringing it in-house. I think this council has responded to those concerns, and I think a perfect example is the work on behalf of the Councilman McAdams, bringing in the review process for this new area, the attorney in-house as well. So I think that this falls right in line with that, and I think it's a good one.
Thank you. I recall in some of the discussion from the first time that this came up, and the first time that we, right, the budget for treatment, obviously the first reading, did a little additional research online, I meant to send some of these documents out against the meeting, and I apologize for not doing so, but I think it's helpful to look at the full breadth of what risk management entails, and it's not just covering employee investigations. To me, it's a difference between proactive and reactive function. And what we heard described earlier by Mr. Geller and by Mr. Flannery in regards to the engagement SERSA or otherwise, those are events that occur reactively. An incident arises, we react to it, we expend a cost to undertaking investigation, all of those big things. Risk management, when broadly announced, enables an organization to take a proactive look across the enterprise, city, business, or employees, and understand not just where risks, predicting those types of risks, but looking at insurance costs, contract that the city might be involved with, or the exposure. There's a range, there are a range of functions that a risk manager undertakes that, to Mr. Geller's point, help the city in the long run realize the savings, or protect itself from those things that are unintended consequences of decisions that were passed. So there's this ongoing, active analysis of the organization to mitigate and minimize risk and make intelligent decisions. And one of those things is to continually look at how benefits, our benefits and insurance are structured, how a provider makes, looks, or a range of things. I'll send these documents out. I appreciate Mr. Benson's comments about the cost, but it's an unfair comparison to say that $100,000 spent here would be better of return by opening up a kitchen, or anything like that. There's nothing in that comparison that will work. I would encourage everyone to do some additional homework on the value of this function. I think the risk of saying that this is something that someone takes on through a couple of seminars does a disservice to the depth of what a risk manager is trained to do. This is, I wouldn't have someone who watched long-term practice law. You wouldn't have someone who went through a couple of seminars on something, being the expert on something. And so I think it is absolutely appropriate that we improve this function, the examples that were set out, we are not the odd city out if we were to employ a risk manager. I think the trends, as I see, through my analysis, is that these are increasingly common positions in the city, in the counties, and in the private sector. So it is not a unique tactic for us to explore within that function in the city.
Mr. Bullock.
I just want to echo exactly what this McAdams said. When going through this and you're looking at the cost and the ratio and how it breaks down, to hire somebody in-house and try and bring them up to speed on this, we would be doing ourselves a disservice because it's, it's a field that people are actually proficient in, and to try to get somebody in-house and bring them up to speed, to send them to all the classes and do everything with them to get them in that position, we would be spending money anyway. And, I mean, until today, when I actually pulled the whole down and they have all these formulas for different types of accidents and looking at it ahead of time, and the cost of investigating an accident, you know, when you talk about SERSA and we talk about accidents, that's just one thing, but they also handle harassment complaints and all these other little things that pop up due to personnel and issues that we never hear about, and that $50,000 deductible gets eaten up really quick, and that's only one half of the salary that we're speaking about for somebody that's already proficient in the field that we're talking about. I can understand Mr. Benson's reluctance in wanting to spend that type of money, but if you look at the long range, you're really saving money instead of spending it, because if you didn't send somebody in-house to go through the training, we wouldn't have them for at least a year and a half while we're training for the position. And then, we're still spending the same money otherwise. I got plenty of education on risk management today, so I'm going to agree with it, and it's not immediately now, I feel that the position is warranted.
You commend you with your end. Mr. Benson.
Well, I don't know, does risk management require a license from the state? Is there a certified risk manager license or anything like that?
I don't know the answer to that question, except that many of the risk managers I've worked with in the past do have certifications. I don't know if it's required, though.
Who's certified?
I don't know. I'm sure it's like a planning association, as for planners, probably a risk management association.
I don't understand.
It's I S O, or Certified Management, International Organization of Standardization. If you go to risk management, you can find out all this, and there are some that aren't certified, but most of them that are in the field are certified and go to ongoing training all the time, stay up on the different aspects of the field, because it's constantly changing. It's a moving target.
Sure. It's just like a lot of other fields, I guess, but, you know, to compare this with practice law, say, where you would go to a vendor and just get legal advice, you know, we do have licenses from the state, and we have to go to school for about eight, four extra hours to get that. I doubt that's what a risk manager has to go through, but, again, I certainly agree with the principle that we need to get somebody to do this. Let me ask this, is part of this managing inventory, like just things that are in the city, on computers, chairs, things like that, is that part of this?
I don't believe that's part of this. That's typically.
One of the seminars, workshops I went to in Washington last year was partly on risk management, and partly that was keeping track of your inventory, because you can lose a lot of things just walking out the door, and there are ways to do that, but I agree that this is needed. I'm just concerned about adding another person as an employee of this city, when I think that there are a lot of, I don't think it would take a year and a half to get somebody up to speed. And I agree that we're, we're spending between $300,000 and $600,000 a year, that's between six and 12. We're spending that on these investigations for claims that are made against the city?
Who wouldn't owe that much? No.
All right. We need this, but there's got to be somebody on our payroll that's competent to do this. Maybe somebody's already got some experience in it. Send them to a month-long seminar, two weeks, or whatever, there's got to be those seminars. What does it take to get certified? Certain task, you have to have a certain amount of experience? If one of our employees can get that experience, get them certified, send them in $100,000 a year, like I said, whether you want to do it to enhance the kitchen at the rec center or whatever, there are other services that we can always find.
Start, they're starting to eat now. Our citizens, let's do it. That particular.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm talking.
Mr. Benson, yes, but you're repeating, sir.
Well, there's been a lot of repetition on this issue, but we need to be able to do this with somebody who's already working for us. If we haven't got somebody on the staff that can be trained to do this in a reasonable amount of time, I'm going to be real disappointed that we don't have that kind of employee on our staff. I'm sure I do. Thank you.
Mr. MacRae, did you have a comment or, if comments, valuable information? Certification programs that I'm able to find information on, including the global, there is the Global Association of Risk Professionals and a couple of the other professional associations. Certification programs require two years minimum, on average, in dealing with risk management, and two and seven, ninety hours of force work, and addition to that time in position. So it is not, again, it's not a seminar-based program. You can choose to disagree with the value of the function. I think it's critical that the homework on discussion items like this be done before the meeting, as opposed to making the statements based on assumptions of that function, as opposed to knowledge of that function. So, any of my thoughts?
Is that, is that semester hours? Is that eighteen hours?
Yeah, it's an active hour, so I'm sure it's semester hours.
All right. Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Bullock, do you have any comment?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mr. Benson, you had another comment?
No, that's, that's.
Good. Ms. Snyder. Please.
Yes, I'm approving of ordinance 1842 on second reading. Council seated.
Ms. Teeter.
Second motion.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1842, if I can read that time. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that we'll see turn between the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance demanding the 2010 budget of the City of Commerce, City Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the general fund in the amount of $17,222 for a risk manager position and supplies, and transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to information technology fund in the amount of $2,635, and transferring from the general fund, community development, building safety vision, to the fleet management fund in the amount of $4,600, for a total amount of $24,457, and authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Another motion, a second. The attorney has read the title. Request a roll call of the votes. Vote is seven, yes, one, no, be it Mr. Benson. Next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding a long-range financial plan. Mr. Flannery, if you would invite staff up to come forward to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to let Mr. Pinkler go up to make his presentation.
She may have seen you in a few minutes.
Okay. Did anyone begin?
The only thing I have here in terms of power for you is the schedule itself. The discussion was laid out in the council communication regarding the public input process, which, excuse me, is affected, does affect this schedule and the two go hand-in-hand. So as you design a public input process, it does have an impact on the schedule potential, depending on the advocate. In the council communication, excuse me, there were two areas of focus. One was the public input process itself, and the other was the use of an advisor or consultant in the process. This process, this schedule that's been laid out, is based on the assumption that city staff will prepare the plan and provide the information to council, and then during that process, presentation to council, it will also obviously be available to the public during the normal city council meeting process. All of that is subject to your direction, and so I'm not sure how much more you're wanting to leave that discussion. I think that's your role, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Discussion, council.
Mr. MacRae. Sorry, are your questions just on the proposed schedule or also on some of the council's approaches? One, two, okay. You know, I think the long-range financial plan is, I had a bit of your sneak come up some time now, in fact, about year or earlier, my senior, I think we're inquiring about the process involving theory in the budget process. My earlier comments suggested, I'm continually frustrated by how quick-works are to jump conclusion or assumptions about what it's like to sit down and plan your useful budget, and how wasteful cities are, how inefficient government operations are. And I continue to challenge folks to actually get involved, and show up at a meeting, or tune in, and pick up a budget and reflect on it, and understand where the dollars and cents go. That said, previously advocated for forming some sort of a citizens committee or a panel that would enable some small subset of citizens to have a more intensive experience in the budget. In anticipation of this discussion, I've done some additional research on that, and unfortunately, I keep coming back to the same point. We can spend a lot of money on those processes, and within a day, you average very few people who get involved. And so in the spirit of some of the comments on other topics tonight, if this is an area where, while I would love to see us invest the time and energy in engaging the community in more intensive budget discussions, and help them have a more intimate knowledge of the appreciation for the hard work that our staff does, I don't think it would pay dividends. And so I think the idea of facilitating this process through one of our council meetings and intensive study sessions on the topic makes great sense. But I do think that we need to take advantage of at least a couple of town hall committees, different points within the process, to help provide an opportunity for an active update to the community about what activities and transponders may have needed analysis obtained at that point. transponders may have needed analysis obtained at that point, allowing for some feedback. But I don't think any more intensive task force approaches would unfortunately do the same job. I had a certain wish. I could find, I could help everybody put them on, but I think unfortunately, this is not the case. But I'm here to see this process the other way. I think the other point here, I had asked a question, I recognize my question was remanded my question through the comments here about whether or not this process could be expedited and providing some external help to facilitate. And I think the feedback it appears was that staff doesn't think that's going to buy us much or not, at least on cost of that outside help. So I respect that and thank you for the reflection on the value of that and that. And we get here to see the process the other way. Thank you for the other...
I would just echo most of Councilman McAdams' comments. I would too like to see more active participation from citizens on this front. I think that process would allow us to make sure that our priorities on this council and where we're spending money is also in line with the views of our community. I tend to agree with Councilman McAdams. I don't know how effective that would be. I think our current process is adequate. I do think that town halls, like Mr. McAdams mentioned, could be a good option to look into. You know, I've had this discussion with Councilwoman Carson a few times. Getting out of, you know, the civic center and kind of having a travel and road show and getting the information out to the public. And it just, just that, just that increased transparency perceived or real, I think, does volumes for the public's confidence in this council and in the staff. So I would, I personally would like to see the issue of town halls explored on this front. Thank you.
Echoing on both of their comments, it was funny that we all say the same thing in just different ways. I'm just hoping that during these discussions, like tonight, that if someone has comments from the audience, they want to come forth and ask that if there's something they don't understand, come and ask about it. So, because it might be the same question that one of us has that we don't want to ask about because we don't want to seem like we don't know what's going on. And I'm going to ask, on the presentations to council for the November for revenue and operating costs, are those different presentations we need to receive back in office?
Yes, sir. Those would be presentations regarding our best estimates of the estimation... Let me start over. It'd be our best estimate of the revenues and expenditures for the next ten years.
Okay. So, I mean, this is truly not just a five-year plan. This is a long-range financial plan. We're talking about five, ten years out.
Ten years out.
Okay. And yes, as citizens, we, I mean, and if you don't want to come forth, call and ask any of us. And if we don't know, we know. Follow us.
Roger. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I didn't feel, and my earlier comments about citizens involved is thinking differently about how we engage with the community. We are fortunate now to have a newspaper publication in partnership with some of our community partners now on a regular basis. And that's obviously people that we can use to convey updates, analysts inputting the community. The other thing that I think we need to look at are some of the examples of municipalities that have used the web to convey in greater detail some of the actions that they did to the budget planning process. So as we develop some of these models, as we develop some of these projections, being able to put them on the web, call attention to the people through the newspaper and make sure that we include a mechanism on the web to, and not, whether it's a phone, you know, email box, a voicemail box, or some mechanism on the website for folks to leave questions or submit suggestions. I think that would be another mechanism that we should look to explore. Thanks.
Well, now it's just going to look like I'm copying Councilman McAdams' comments. I too agree. The city has a Twitter account, a Facebook page. Just simple things as posting the budget online and calling attention and saying, hey, you know, the city's budget is ready. We'd like your feedback. I think it could do a lot for the people who maybe aren't able to get here on Monday night or whenever we have our city sessions to share their input. So I think it's something to look at and a good way to get information off the community.
You know, this is one of those really nice times when you watch and listen to the council and they're all saying exactly the same thing. They're just heading down the same road and it's perfect. But one thing, we need those people, few people that are on the other end of that, that camera there, to become more involved. You get a chance you can watch us twenty-four hours a day, but I'm going along with it. That is one more advocate for us, knowing that that's out there. While I was away and ill, I was able to listen and follow and get everything that was said. It's a wonderful source. So that was great. And any other discussions, Mr. Flannery, do you have anything to say on this point or anybody from council?
I would just like to end the conversation if there isn't any, that this is everything that is critical to the city as the comprehensive plan, as the economic development strategic plan. And as we discussed in the retreat in January, it's actually the overarching document that connects everything else. So without this being solid, we've got a lot more risk of looking at the budget in a different light than we should. So we need to nail all of these things down through the town hall process. And I personally don't want to necessarily, and I know that's not what I'm hearing tonight, discount a citizens committee at some point. And I think, you know, through a good education process, through the town hall process, through our outreach, through Twitter and Facebook, that momentum could grow and we do see citizens coming forward and wanting to be active in this. So I think that's a longer term. So it fits into that long-range timeframe, but not so long-range that's hidden. I could see it in the next year, really building some on it. So.
You're right.
Sorry, funny when I go here. One of the things that I got here in relation to Mr. Pinkler's comments on the timing, the impact of bringing the communities, the fact that it would extend the time out, when we would actually have a long-range financial plan. And I think that's a risk that we can't take from within two years before we have a long-range financial plan in hand. And I think the concept of bringing the citizens committee or some form of advisory we're hoping to have makes good sense to me. But I think getting a handle on a long-range financial plan based on the plan that we've, whose Mr. Pinkler worked out, I think makes good sense to me, that whole, and then explore through the, through town hall process and through all the processes over the coming year, what we wanted to do to help manage toward that long-range financial plan for now.
Yes, do we have any kind of order or commission or citizens can review the budget in lieu of the recommendation like we do for a lot of the things that we do? Does such thing exist right now?
There, there's no committee that exists. I think that's part of the topic that eventually the goal would be to get to that point.
What do we need to do to form such a commission or task force or committee?
I think, I think through the discussion tonight, the first major thing is to get this segment done. And if we're looking at June of eleven, then through town hall process, through, through the evaluation of the public as well as the council, look at putting together a committee of such nature.
So what's your timeframe on that?
It looks like July of eleven is when the target date is for completion.
Can we, how can we work that down? So we know the record that we can and you can apply. Because I'd like to get everybody else to, I think that would be useful type of committee or commission. We have these things for every other issue, it seems like.
Yeah, the, well, the packet is there for your, for your file. We also have a number of meetings, as you can see on the chart above, that will be coming back to the council. You will be actively involved as well as directing the process. So you will absolutely be involved.
I'll just ask remaining, the other members of council, have you ever heard of that issue of July next year? So we don't forget to, oh, no, but...
Just, just so that I am standing, so that I'm not, not missing something. Mr. McAdams and Mr. Bullock, did you not already suggest that you would take care of this at the time? I just want to make sure that I was part, I was listening to the right conversation.
If I can speak to my, my other comments, I think my comment was not to employ that form of committee now, but to get the stuff, the long-range financial plan drafted by staff. If, if you recall, I raised a proposal for a committee of that nature about a year and a half ago. It's now removed down at the time. I keep the draft hanging and I continue to reflect on what the function of such a committee might be. And I think, let's get to long-range financial plan. Let's look at what it's telling us, you know, let's reflect on what the function of a committee could be, what it should be, what the composition of that should be, and make sure that the value of the committee, needs to receive the cost of the committee. But to look at it that way. Mr. Bullock?
Echoing what Mr. McAdams said, that when you look at the timetable here for different presentations, it seems like our last presentation is going to be in April or May. And I would say what we, as we move along and as we get more information on the long-range financial plan, then we start trying to involve and incorporate citizens in the community to get involved in the long-range financial plan. I wouldn't want to put the cart before the horse and start involving them before I even know what I'm, I'm getting information on. But you're right, around about May or June of next year, we should definitely be looking for some kind of, or see if we have citizens participation. And also during our retreat that we have in January, this is a topic that should be brought up on how we want to see what it, see it look. And so it's something that we just don't get to it and then we don't have a plan on how to do it. But the fact that Mr. McAdams said he brought it up before and it was sounding defeated, he does have a plan and all we have to do is look at it and see how we, the council, walk this plan and look because we do have groundwork to begin with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bullock. Next item on the agenda is quarter financial update, I imagine. Thank you. Mr. Flannery, you're going to be in charge again.
Yes, sir. This first slide is to give you a little bit of historical perspective. In 2008, the actual revenues were forty-seven point two million and we did not use anything from fund balance for transfers in. Our expenditures that year were forty-six point nine million. So we ended up with three hundred and thirty-five thousand to the good that year. The 2009 budget, we budgeted for forty, forty-nine point seven million of revenue. We also budgeted to take five hundred eighty, or five point eight million from general fund balance and transfer in three point two million. Our real revenue, after deducting those, was forty-eight point six million in terms of our budget. And then we budgeted forty-seven, or forty-nine point seven million in expenditures. The actual was that we took in forty-five point three million in revenue. We used seven hundred and twenty thousand of general fund balance and we transferred in three point two million. And our, our real revenues were forty-two point one million and our actual expenditures were forty-six million. What we budgeted for 2010 is forty-nine point six million of revenue, general fund balance of one hundred eighty-six thousand, almost twenty-seven, and transfers in at five point two million. The real revenue then, the net of that is forty-four point, almost three million. The expenditures were budgeted at forty-nine point six million. This is the amended budget now. We showed twenty-nine thousand going to fund balance. Where we are in the third quarter as of September thirty is that we've had forty-two point two million, almost forty-three, forty-two point three million in revenue. That's all real revenue because we have not moved any money in from the transfers or used anything of the general fund balance yet. We don't use general fund balance until the end of the year. Our expenditures through September are thirty-four point one million. So, you know, just on the face of it, we're eight million to the good. But remember that five point nine, almost six million of that are one-time revenues from the stack settlements that we discussed earlier. So when you back that out of there, then our net to the good is two point one nine. So that's really good news so far. This kind of discusses where that five point two million of fund balance was coming from. One million from IT retained earnings, two point five million from fleet retained earnings. Those are internal service funds. That money is set aside. We have allocation system where, for example, I have a computer on my desk. So the Department of Finance pays for a portion of that computer each year and does that for all employees. All departments pay into the IT fund for the use of that computer. That allows money to be built up to replace computers. Same thing happened with fleet. So that's how money is built up in those two internal service funds because that money is used to replace equipment. We were able to pull some of that money out of those funds without jeopardizing the immediate replacement of the equipment. So that was what was done for the budget. We also moved nine hundred and sixty-three thousand from the water acquisition fund because that originally came from the general fund. Same type of principle. It was money that was set aside, but it can be moved back in. Same thing was done with the CIPP fund contingency, seven hundred and five thousand coming there. And then we also budgeted thirty-five thousand to come from conservation trust, which is the lottery revenue that is shared from the state. And that money into the general fund to help pay for equipment for the park recreation department. And then we also proposed using general fund balance, ninety-nine thousand, as well as we have built up an equipment reserve fund for replacing the park recreation department. And we budgeted to use eighty-seven thousand of that. So that eighty-seven thousand will be used. It remains to be seen whether we need to use the ninety-nine thousand of general fund balance. And it remains to be seen whether we actually have to pull money from these internal service funds and from the water acquisition fund and capital improvement in order to balance the budget. Right now, it looks like we will not have to do that. But, so let me review with you the light orange, brownish, it always come out differently on the screen than you do on the computer. But on the right side are the graphs, the bar graphs, showing what happened in 2009. The extreme right side are the expenditures. The middle bar is the budget and the left hand of those three is the revenue. And that's based on, not using fund balance. This is purely real revenues compared to budget compared to expenditure. So that's why the budget looks like it's less than the expenditure because that's the budget without using fund balance. I did that for a purpose. It's misleading if you took it all by itself, but I did that for a purpose and that is to compare to the 2010 year-to-date. If you take blue bars, the right-hand column, or the right-hand bar of that group before is the expenditures, or are the expenditures, 2010, third quarter. So a little over thirty-four million. The budget without fund balance is just a little over thirty-three million, so less because we budgeted to use fund balance. That's why that difference again appears that way. That's why that difference again appears that way. The dark blue line, except one on the left side, is the 2010 budget without fund balance. And the extreme left-hand bar is the revenue without fund balance. So that's our real revenue, over thirty-six million. Again, well in excess of our expenditures and well in excess of our budget. So extremely good news. Um, these are the numbers that that's based on. Uh, the recurring revenues, we budgeted forty-six million, year-to-date thirty-six million. So we're at seventy-eight percent. Now normally, we would expect to be at seventy-five percent, because we're three-quarters of the way through the year. The one-time revenues, uh, budgeted three point three million, and we're at five point nine million, almost six million. So we're at one hundred and seventy-seven percent of that budget. Overall, we're at eighty-five percent of revenue to budget. You know, we're at seventy-five percent of the way through the year. Expenditures, uh, we budgeted forty-nine million, forty-nine point six million. And year-to-date expenditures are thirty-four million. So we're at sixty-nine percent. Again, good news on the revenue side, good news on the expenditure side. Part of that is due to the fact that we've seen more building activity occur than was budgeted. Uh, looking at the left-hand side of this bar chart, you notice that we're at one hundred and thirty million of total permanent valuations. And that's through the third quarter. As last year, comparing to last year, we had forty-nine point nine million for the entire year. All of the other bars show the entire year for those years, whereas, uh, 2010 is year-to-date recent. So again, good news there, and it's based on the number of permits that's shown here. Three thousand eight hundred year-to-date total permits. So that's all types of permits compared to, um, in 2001. That was the entire year, two thousand nine million. So, uh, good news again. Debt service, uh, this is another major fund, comparing 2009 to 2010. Uh, we always run ahead of revenues and ahead of budget because of the major payments that have happened for debt service. So that's, uh, um, to be expected on the expenditure side. It could be ahead of budget. The good news is that revenue is ahead of budget compared to 2009, it's behind budget. Um, those are the numbers. Revenues are at seventy-five percent, which is where we should be. Expenditures are at ninety-four percent, because of the major payments that have been made. So there's no more major payments for the rest of the year. Uh, salt fund, we have, uh, as we did, two point five million revenue through the third quarter. We're at one point nine nine, seventy-five percent. Uh, on the expenditure side, uh, we're at one point eight million, which is seventy-four percent. So it's good news on the expenditure side, but, uh, we would like to see revenues a little more advanced than this end of the year. So we'll see how this happens out by the end of the year. And, uh, my final slide is looking at our revenues. And again, I'll start along the left-hand column, which are the 2010 expenditures. We're projecting right now that our expenditures will come in at about forty-six point six million through the year. Uh, the budget is forty-nine point six million, so about a three million dollar difference. The recurring revenue is the middle bar, uh, we're showing that at forty-seven point five million. The total revenue, uh, assuming transfers and all that, would be fifty-two point nine million. And, uh, so far, well, comparing that to our 2009 revenue, that was forty-nine, uh, forty-five point three million for the entire year. So again, uh, extremely good news comparing this year to last year, and comparing this year's revenues and our expenditures to budget. That's why, uh, right now, it looks very favorable that we'll be in this year, and very positive now.
Commentary, council. Mr. Bullock?
This is only good news. I mean, uh, when you put those numbers on that graph and everything, the fact that we're going to, if everything comes out all right and we don't run into anything unforeseen, we're going to come out, uh, this year with excess revenue, and we won't even have to maybe even give it to the fund office. That would be... And there are too many cities around the metro area that say that. I don't know one yet, but, uh, I hope they're watching this on their TV so, um, they can say, well, what are they doing different in Commerce City? And, um, I know what we're doing. And we are from a terrible surveillance group, okay?
And, and for my communication with a lot of mayors, the only city that always seems to do better than us is Glendale, and there's probably a reason. Ms. Snyder?
Hi, Mr. Hank Glumbergh. I'd love to thank you for your presentation, as always. You do a great job. Still, we're very fortunate to have you at the helm of our finances. And, um, in fact, what you're telling us is that this is good news, and that we are in fact in good shape. The city is in good shape, and we're actually finishing better than we had even anticipated before. So it is all good news. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's the best news we could hear, so thank you.
Mr. Maria?
Thanks, Roger. I really appreciate these quarterly financial updates. Uh, you mentioned, you referenced, uh, payments that were made. Uh, were one of, was, were one of those payments the strategic bond that we had talked about, um, that would shield us from some of the effects of, if the measures did pass in November?
The payments that were made were on the existing bond issues as compared. Um, those are the normal payments. Uh, we have not, uh, we have discussed de-feeding, uh, the 2002 bonds. That has not happened. That, that is something that will require council approval to do that. Um, the financial advisors that I've talked to have advised waiting until after the November election. And then, you know, it would be management's decision whether to bring that to you definitely or not, and, uh, I, I have tried to preempt that.
We will bring that to you, absolutely. We'll bring it to you, and that was part of our discussion and presentation with you, especially if those, if those measures are approved. One thing I wanted to mention, uh, Roger mentioned a, uh, departments making payments. Um, and somebody might ask, well, how do departments make payments? It's really a paper payment, because it's tracking of the allocation that each department has, whether they use, how much they use vehicles, or how much they use computers. Everybody uses computers. But what it is, is it's, it's revenue that we receive through taxes. And that amount goes into a pool, and, and there's an allocation, uh, that each department is assigned. So it's, it's kind of a channeling of that tax revenue into a pool that is assigned to departments. And so when we go in and divvy the fund balances, as we mentioned, and I've, I've mentioned many times in, in the budget presentations, it's, it's a pool of money that many cities don't have, uh, because they don't, they don't channel their self-tax revenue into those types of things. So it's a really good tool. Um, and at times, like we've had in the last few years, um, it's been a lifesaver itself, budget, uh, bridge the gap that we've, we've had because of the loss in growth in, in housing. But our, our position as a budget team to the city council has been very, very conservative, fiscally. And so, um, when we look at how we approach, uh, the budget, um, it, it leaves that room to, um, to actually, uh, when the revenues do come in, we don't have to divvy into those fund balances under budget. So it's, it's actually kind of a nice thing to have that position rather than the reverse. So, thank you.
Before I get any nasty calls, um, Mayor Larry Hart from Glendale and I are very close friends, and they have every, besides Target, every big box you've ever heard of, and every restaurant I've ever heard of, and a very well-known population. So, uh, that's why they usually do so well. Thank you very much. I love coming here, uh, some of these, these past items on our budget, because, um, different than what you hear on some blog sites. Our budget is doing well, and our city is doing well, and we don't have a lot of those problems. And, Mr. Bullock, I am just, you, you have no idea how much I'm starting to like you. I, I won't tell anybody else in public that today, you know? I, but, uh, I am really enjoying you. You're doing lots of homework in here and out there. I appreciate it. Um, the next item, I need a motion to go into executive session. Can you read the motion from the item off your agenda, Ms. Snyder?
Yes, move to going to executive session for purposes of contract negotiations regarding economic development in Commerce City for some of the CRS 2464024E.
And Mr. McAdamy?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into moving to executive session. Is there any discussion? Say none, voice vote, call some favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thirty minutes, maybe?
Thirty, forty-five.
Thirty or forty-five minutes. Thank you very much. We will be in executive session. Okay, we're now going to the House Executive Session. There, uh, is no action to be taken in the report. Uh, next thing is administrative business. Remember, this is questions where you are asking for some action by council and not reports. Does anybody have any executive session? Mr. Maria?
Yes, I, uh, I see Mr. Spelsworth in the audience, and I appreciate him being here. Uh, he asked me some time ago about, um, a railroad, piece of railroad that had fallen to disrepair near Fairfax Park. Uh, Mr. Aker was going to hand that off to, to, uh, the railroad. I just want to make sure that we weren't losing that, and if we had anything to report, or, um, maybe if we could get a report soon, that'd be great.
Okay. Mr. Flannery, okay? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, um, I was instructed last week to let council know how much each one of their shares would be for the bench. It's a hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents. And I have talked to, uh, the city attorney, and we're able to use our discretionary funds for this, because our discretionary funds come in just like if you wanted to buy a table at an event or anything like this. This bench would be under the same aspects of all of us going together to buy a table or the, um, um, North Metro Chambers, the deal of. So, so if, I mean, if, if it's one of these things, a pinch comes a shove, nobody should not be able to chip in because of the fact that, uh, financial inability. So, um, I know that we were saying, but I think we better let somebody know in Parks and Recreation that if we're going to do this bench, what the, we want to apply conduct from the council in all our names, and to the, what did you try to phrase that, Tracy? To all of us, uh, with somebody's name in it, and all of us, or some...
And all of us.
However, phrase. Joe Riley and all the veterans. I mean, I know we said, okay, we'll work that out, but, um, our, we're running short of time. And I kept trying to think of what is happening on the ninth, because I was told the day that ninth is coming up for something.
The ninth is the day that we dedicate the veterans' memorial, so we can have it done before then.
We can have it done.
So it needs to be done like tomorrow or yesterday, so...
Okay, to make this easy, it's okay to use discretionary funds. Mr. Bullock and Ms., um, Snyder, if the two of you would take charge of this. Now, what I need from council is, is it okay? Is there, does anyone on council have any challenge with us using discretionary funds to do this bench? Mr. McAdamy, is that for now or for later?
No, the way she went, just didn't do any of my balance sat and fight enough. We were worried.
But they're all okay. They will all take it. Uh, because you had given half of your funds over to me, and then they weren't used, so...
Mr. Bullock, we would get together like this week, and hit this building. Would you please, would you call me, and we'll set up time to get together? That's, that's what I would like your counsel.
I would like also to get together with, uh, either Carolyn or Mike Brown, so we can make sure that our thoughts are known. And we are, because, uh, this is going to be special to us and to everybody else on that day.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on that particular item, or can we figure out if that's closed? Mr. Benson, is it on this particular item?
Yeah, um, I'm not personally having that left in my discretionary funds, because I use a lot of it for our work to be, but just letting you know, all right, check. There's no money left in the discretionary funds. I need to do this.
Really, thank you, sir. Okay, next, Mr. Maria, did you have a administrative?
Yeah, I want to just put the record, uh, Mr. Mayor. So our minutes will reflect that there was consensus then to proceed with use of the funds for the, uh, the Veterans Memorial Bench.
Right. Now, now back to you, Mr. Maria.
Uh, on each of your guests earlier in the meeting, I placed, uh, this article, uh, from the Denver Post that, uh, appeared, um, over the weekend. Um, a man that, that worked in our city was, uh, killed, um, in a fire at his, uh, at his work, I, I believe Mr. Bullock said it wasn't specifically at his work site, but he lived and worked in Commerce City and, uh, and perished while on the job. Um, so I, I brought this in just to see if we could, uh, perhaps get our staff to maybe try to find out some information about him, and maybe send up some condolences on behalf of council. Um, because as Mr. Bullock said, this thing happened recently. This just came about because it, it was found that the company was in violation of a couple of, um, OSHA's, uh, standards. Um, but, uh, it's, uh, it's something that I think that, that we should just try to reach out and send a little letter of condolences family.
Does anyone on council have a challenge with that? Mr. Maria, if you would work with Mr. Flannery to make sure that that gets done?
Has that...
Mr. Flannery, is that okay with you? Okay. Anything else, sir, for you? Mr. McAdamy?
Okay, um, I just have one thing. Um, I was going to bring in an article, and I need to add something to the, to the agenda on a future coming up. There was a big article in, uh, I think the Hub on Reigen, and Reigen was doing some kind of a after-school meeting for preschool kids. I was going to bring it into Carolyn and say, this is one great idea. This would be, why don't we do something? Well, during that time, we all got the press release from Parks and Rec. We're doing so many things in Parks and Rec that are so good and things that other cities are not doing. What I would like council to do is give me approval to put on the budget for, or put on the budget, put on the agenda for a future meeting, to have Parks and Rec come and do a short presentation, similar to what Ms. Morris does for ED, saying, you know what, here's all of the things that we do in Parks and Rec. Um, there are so many different classes and sports things, and the people probably here on the other end of this camera don't even realize that we offer. Um, does anybody on council have any problem with me requesting that to be added to a future agenda item? Okay, Mr. Flannery, if you could do that. And I'm not looking for, you know, this full-blown, I mean, make it nice, but, but something that says, you know what, look at what Parks and Rec is doing. I know that's a, something that's kind of close to Mr. Bullock's heart also, but that's what people see, is what Parks and Rec do. They're the, you know, people come into our city and see our parks, and see the grounds, and see all of those things. They don't even realize that this is the department that takes care of it. So if you could take care of that, I, that would be great. Uh, Mr. Bullock, did you guys something?
Yes, I also want to bring up the Sand Creek, uh, item for administrative business that because I am a, uh, citizen member of Sand Creek, I cannot also be the, uh, member from the city council. So if anybody on city council is willing to step up and be the Sand Creek member, they meet the first Thursday of every month from twelve to possibly one fifteen at the latest. Usually, we're out of there by one o'clock, uh, so, and we all just chip in for, they put food there, and you just put in a dollar or two and get what you want and everything. But it's a great meeting, and it's a great organization to be a part of.
Okay?
Um, Renee?
Mr. Bullock?
Oh, this, oh, Renee.
Yes.
Um, where is it located at?
Over on Twenty-Ninth and, um... well, Syracuse basically over there and, um, Staple, uh, Stapleton Shopping Center. Right as you turn off the twenty-ninth avenue, right there on the right, next to Starbucks and, um, Heinz, I think, but, um,
Right by the, the King Supers and.
I know where that is.
Okay, yeah. I have Ms. Snyder and then I have this kid. Thank you. Ms. Snyder first.
Sorry, I was just gonna say that I would volunteer to do it.
And that's what you were gonna say.
I think that's what Ms. Snyder.
Would the two of you be willing to take that on so that one of you is there? Because my understanding is there's no second because you couldn't make it, or is it my incorrect?
The, Mr. Bullock, at the last meeting, we appointed Mr. Bullock as the regular, I was alternate. I would be willing to give up my spot as alternate and perhaps we could appoint this Peter and Snyder.
Okay, is that be okay?
Yeah, we can alternate back and forth, yeah.
Is that okay?
If we work well together, that would happen, yeah.
Does anyone have a concern with the two of them doing it? Now, Mr. Gaylor, do we need to assign a primary and a secondary or can make? I'm getting a lot of hits, yes, back and back. Would the two of you be willing to make that decision and then get in touch with Mr. Gaylor?
Sure.
Is that okay?
This seems.
Would that be okay when I'm making that?
You know, back there, how's your handle? Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. With Ms. Nealon, not with Mr. Gaylor. They just keep giving you more jobs. Is that okay, sir?
That works. The only thing is, is we should have amendments. So if they decide during the week, then next week, we would have it on bill agenda.
Put it on the agenda to say, may, and Mr. Flannery, maybe that's what we wanna do is just, at the end, just put appointment because by then they would've gotten in touch with Ms. Nealon. Ms. Nealon can put just a short memo together that says, this is who's gonna do it and it's not.
We should have an alternate.
And agree.
Have an appointee and an alternate and then you two can work out between you if you wanna really alternate the meetings, but for purposes of the city's action, we should have an appointee and an alternate.
And thank you, Mr. Marino, for making that possible. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. I forgot completely about that. Now we're to report. Mr. Marino.
Um, just had a couple, a couple of things to report. Uh, well, for one, uh, I had a great meeting with, uh, Mr. Bullock and, uh, Mr. Aker and Mr. Cordero regarding some neighborhood identification. Uh, I think we're making a lot of progress on that front. Um, and I think that's something that's gonna come to fruition, uh, soon and, uh, and it'll be, it'll be greatly much needed in the, in the southern part of the community where we can finally identify our neighborhoods and, and recognize our history and honor it. Um, the other thing is we, uh, the first meeting of the rental property task force, uh, was assembled on Wednesday, the thirteenth. Uh, that, I think, went pretty well and was able to stay for the entire meeting, uh, but Ms. Carson and Mr. Benson were there. Um, and, uh, I think that, that board is gonna be able to get along pretty well and, uh, it was really just, uh, a meeting to convene and, and set out the ground rules and what kind of, uh, schedule that we're looking at. So it's gonna be five weekly meetings, uh, Thursdays at twelve P.M. Um, and the next meeting will be October twenty-eighth for anyone that's interested in going. Uh, and then, uh, uh, just to report on my, on my trip, uh, went, um, on Thursday, uh, yeah, Thursday, October fourteenth, uh, was able to, uh, attend the Vice President's residence and, uh, and celebrate Spanish Heritage Month there. Um, we had a chance to, to talk with him and meet him and, uh, you know, I mentioned, I thanked him for coming out to Commerce City and, and giving a speech at Adams City High School. My alma mater, I told him, and, uh, so, uh, he said that he's very much looking forward to coming back to Commerce City in twenty-twelve and giving another speech. So, uh, it'll be exciting, uh, to have him back and, uh, and his, uh, they were extremely gracious opening up their home and, uh, it was just a very nice event. So I thank, uh, the city council for, for approving that trip and letting me, uh, represent the city, um, being the Vice President.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, as Councilman Marino said, we did have a real property task force meeting last, uh, Thursday, the thirteenth, and we scheduled three more meetings, um, essentially five weeks except that one would fall on next meeting day, so we met in the next week. But October twenty-eighth and November eleventh and then December second. These will be from twelve in the evening until two A.M. and they'll be here in the civic center. Now, one, one thing that was said during this meeting, it was said by Oral Lewis, who's an alternate member of the, uh, landlord representatives, he said, we do have a problem. And so I'm thinking that one of the things we're gonna be looking at is how do we solve the problem? Uh, it's good to get that out from one of the landlords that we do have a problem, so I agree with him. Also, then on the fourteenth, the next day, uh, we had, uh, an E470 meeting. And in preparation for whatever might happen on the second, uh, the staff of E470 has, I don't know what you call it, they re-casted several bond issues that, uh, E470 has outstanding. So that, uh, the impact of sixty-sixty-one one-on-one, if they pass, won't be as great. So I think they've got very good financial staff, as I've mentioned before. Uh, E470 has about one hundred million dollars in debt as opposed to a, and a twenty-five million dollar operating budget. So, so there's a huge amount of debt which can really, uh, these initiatives really have a bad effect and I'll go into that a little bit later. They're, uh, working with Pro Park, you know, the new, uh, parking, uh, structure going across from the USA Parking, uh, to, uh, do some things that are gonna be beneficial to both E470 and Pro Park, which is in Commerce City. As part of the, one of the things we went over was the budget for twenty-eleven. And eight million, nine hundred thousand dollars of that budget is from vehicle registration fees in the area served by E470. Um, we get ten dollars per vehicle. Now, if one-on-one passes, your vehicle registration goes down to ten dollars. And E470, he is going to get all of that because that rig was put in place prior to Tampa. It was put in place back in eighty-eight. So if one-on-one passes, you're gonna get in ten dollars and it's all gonna go to E470, at least that's what we think. So, there's another impact. One big matter was that they had a figure of ten million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for our tower to ban ramp. Now, it was called, uh, an unfunded capital expenditure. So we did that whenever we want, but at least it's, it's on the two thousand and twelve budget, ten million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We also talked about the fact that, and everybody's, you know, we're all doing these budgets and everything and nobody really knows what's gonna happen if sixty-sixty-one one-on-one passed. We really don't know. We don't have to find out, but, um, if sixty-one passes, it could cost E470 probably somewhere between twenty and thirty billion dollars a year in taxes because they figured that the road itself is forty-seven miles. It's almost a billion dollars worth of roads, the interchanges and everything else. All that would become taxable under that, uh, then that sixty. So then the entire operating budget for E470 would be wiped out. We take, uh, we take that into account. Um, so it was an interesting meeting at E470 and, um, after that, I guess that night, that Thursday night football game between thirty High School and Reigen, uh, we had, um, our mayor, Mayor Dave McLean and, uh, school superintendent, Black Walker, doing the, uh, calling. How can all three of you vote for him?
Well, just to play off of what you're saying, the referee looked at the three of us and he said he wasn't giving any of us that calling. Did I ever get that?
Any of that? Thirty, we'd been fighting thirty-four and twenty-one and so thirty is now five and two. May not even make it to the playoffs, uh, this year for the first time in history. This is only like the, the fourth year of Perry's football team, so, um, I think that's, that's pretty good that they're finally making it, uh, into at least a five-point season. I wanna congratulate Mr. Akers, alma mater, Oklahoma State, for beating Texas Tech and going six-and-oh, is that right? And then somewhere in the top fifteen in the nation, so, um, congratulations on that. That's all, that's all. I'm not gonna mention more.
Thank you, thank you.
I might mention, you said November eleventh, I believe, for your meeting. Uh, you're aware that's Veterans Day, so it is a holiday for the city, so just so you rip that into account.
Is that not one of them we're doing on Mondays or is it always gonna be on, uh, the eleventh? Which is, so I, well, one of the armistice days, I guess, that was what it used to be called armistice. Yeah, always something like that. Well, that's what we, we might need to reconsider.
Check that.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Carson, can you, what are your points?
Oh, you're wonderful. Mr. Flannery, I forgot you again, but I'll let you go right here in the middle. I don't know why I keep doing it, but I do.
It's okay, uh, we don't mind going on to the end.
Okay.
Um, I, 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 uh, have three minor issues. I love the, the article of the Washington Post under, I, I emailed it last week, but, um, Carol lobbyist in Washington, D.C. thought so much of the article that she actually emailed, or she actually physically made on the paper to us, so I thought I could do a hard copy. Um, sometimes it's easier to read and see it in, you know, in hard copy. Um, I want to, uh, let you know that, uh, we kinda duplicated a, the effort, uh, for what we did in January, the business summit. Uh, we had a, um, a minority-owned business summit on Thursday last week, got it off on the run. And we had a pretty decent attendance. There was only about ten businesses, but they were very, um, uh, vocal as far as what some of their issues were and so, um, I wanna thank Chief Ryan Cordero for his, uh, work on that and setting that up. Um, and so we had a really good discussion. We're gonna be looking back with them and, and following up with them on specifics that they raised. Um, and then I wanted to call your attention to communication that went out last week for CTVD communication and all users' email went out. But I wanna call the public's attention to, um, some of the communications and, uh, it also goes out to business leaders as well as, uh, others in the community. And we're going to boost that up on our, um, economic development webpage, so you have a lot of good information. There's an interview with Cummings, um, Engines, who just came in with some high-paying jobs and, uh, some of the reasons why they chose Commerce City. And I think it's good for people to understand why we're being selected for these types of things. So that's it, Mr. Marino.
Thank you. Mr. Gaylor? Okay. Ms. Carson, you said no recording?
No, that's fine, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, so it's Peter. Okay, Peter?
Uh, I only have one thing. On last Thursday, I attended the ceremony with the deletion of the twenty-five hundred acres from the U.S., um, Rocky Mountain Marshall to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And, um, there were a lot of key speakers there, Ed Crowder, Kim Salazar, and from the U.S. Army, Charlie Sharn. It was just a beautiful study and that day, uh, if you find you're there, you can have a better day. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I want to piggyback on, uh, off of what, um, Ms. Peter said on the fifteenth, the ceremony. Uh, Ms. Peter and Ms. Snyder were also there and, um, um, you couldn't have had a better day. And, uh, Hugh Wolf, uh, the acting deputy assistant for the Secretary of the Army, was one that signed over the papers to, um, Kim Salazar, the U.S. Secretary of Interior. And, I mean, we got great pictures of it. Um, I think, uh, uh, we all got pictures with the Secretary of Interior and, uh, Congressman and everything and, um, it was just, and as she says, you couldn't have had a better day. I mean, there's leaf, all the colors of the leaves in the background. They had the eagle behind the, um, two gentlemen signed in the paper and it's the right time to make the eagle move, so it spreads its wings and everything. Yes, and, and it was on the news. I mean, it knew they already were happening on the news. And then the next day, they had the refuge ground up out there, the, uh, refuge. And, uh, there had to be five thousand people out there for the refuge ground up. And all sorts of, uh, events and different things to do and it was just another perfect day with all these people that don't live in Commerce City, come into Commerce City to see the buffalo soldiers and the man with the dancing horse and, um, the, every kind of bird you could see out there. They made other ones put their birds away because they say, when they let this one bird fly, if he sees any other of the, friend of the birds out there, he just goes to kill them. So, you know, and never mess with an owl. Cause my child's having, that the owl is the toughest of all the birds. Eagles don't even mess with the owls. They warn owls because it will kill all of them. So, I mean, it was an education for me and this is between work on both days because I left work and they were thinking, does he ever do anything here? And I really do, but it was great case. Um, we've been asked by the Jersey Association for the council to buy a tree and decorate it for the Tree Fest this year. And this is in December and I was thinking, well, this is pretty far ahead of time, but, um, it's time to start thinking maybe of a theme for our tree if we wanna do it. I mean, this is the same we have, but something that when we win, you know, we don't come in second or third, we are actually winners. So if you think it's a good idea and you wanna buy a tree, um, just let us know and it's only a hundred dollars, but if we wanted to have a tree, that's a winner if we do go into it, you know?
I think it's a great idea. I buy two trees every year myself, uh, Mr. McAdams and Ms. Snyder. So I think it's a wonderful idea. It would be great and it'd be cheap. But, um, would you like to take control of that, sir?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody here on council have a challenge with us doing that?
Let's buy a tree.
Let's buy a tree. We can do this. You're on, sir, and you're right. We get one tree and we give it up, right? There's no way we can lose. Anything else, sir? No, Mr. Snyder?
Okay, just to echo, um, what Councilman Bullock and Councilwoman Peters said. I attended the vision fulfillment after the Rocky Mountain Marshall and it was absolutely a perfect, beautiful day. And when they were signing that document and that eagle spread his wings down, I mean, it's just one of those moments that you'll always remember. And it was an unforgettable, just a snapshot, you know, you have those snapshots in your mind with different things that have happened in your life. It was a snapshot in time that I will not forget. And, yeah, I mean, the way they handled those animals, I mean, they're so good at it and it was just a beautiful, it was a beautiful ceremony, a great moment in time for everyone. And in addition to the people that were mentioned, um, also John Brothers was there as well. So we just had, everybody showed up, everybody, you know, it was just, it was a great event. Um, I also attended an event for, um, New York the Liver on Friday night and, um, the fray played at Sally Gart's house and it was, um, I want, you know, Sally Gart was so generous to, um, you know, lend her home out for that event and it was really quite amazing to actually see the fray in the backyard. So what an opportunity to, uh, to, to meet a lot of these people that I haven't yet and plus, you know, spend time with several people that I have already met, so, um, it was a great evening. Um, also the, uh, Public Safety Crime Prevention, the Scaring Committee, you know, as, as you know, we recently met in San Jose and there's a lot of information that our, um, NLC representative has been taking back to D.C. to discuss that came out of that meeting. Um, one of the issues was the, was immigration and what the, um, what the federal level, um, what they're going to do at the federal level because it makes it very difficult, as in the case of Arizona, to try to do anything on either way, um, either side of the fence without any input from the federal level. So, um, there was a lot of discussion about that. So there's a lot of things that are coming down from, not just about immigration and, and how that affects public safety, um, but a lot of the things that were discussed. And as I've mentioned, I'll be coming forward with a report on that for everyone, but information is coming back from that meeting from the, from the D.C. the federal level and so I wanna get that information together before I come back with a report, but things are moving forward from that committee meeting, so that's what I've got. moving forward from that committee meeting, so that's what I've got. Thanks.
Last, I wanna thank Mayor Joe Snyder for standing in for me so much. Friday was not a really happy day for me, so there's no way I can make that event out of Arsenal. Actually, it was invented at 7:30 in the morning for Adams County Council of Government's meeting, and I think I ended your car for an hour in the back, just wore my body out. So I want to thank you for handling that, which was wonderful. It was funny, because when I saw the picture, that's somebody that I used to go out to the Arsenal grounds in the older days with. Ken's been around for a long time, brought in those eagles, and he's through, give some other animals, I can't remember what kind they were, that his boss would take. So it was nice to see him. And today, Mr. Baker and I met with a representative from an organization called O21. And what they're trying to do is to get businesses to realize that rail is getting to be the cheapest way to move freight. They were just passing the information, Mr. Baker's gonna look into how does that impact the companies that we actually have in our city, and sometime in the future, we'd have a report. But she was more just making contact to say, we actually have an organization that's doing this, it's a national one, and she'd become a city, and I'm not quite, I think because we're such a big trucking area. But really, nothing came out of it, she was more, it was just for introduction. Just wanted to remind, go through the calendar and remind everybody, when I'm done and close meeting, there's still a GID, so don't get up. Okay, today's 18th, 19th tomorrow, seeing your birthday lunch, if anybody gets a chance to go down, that's always a fun thing. The 21st is Lights On After School at Kearney, at 6160. On the 27th is the Ad Cop Dinner at Kearney Square, make sure you get to, to land, let her know if you wanna go. Also, for United Power, they're having a Key Account Luncheon that day, on 27th, from 11:15 to 1:00. If anybody's interested in going, you just need to give United Power a call and tell them you're going. Derby Grand Opening is set for October 28th, is that still on the calendar, Mr. Clary?
Yeah.
So, good. The 29th is Development Council Breakfast, and then the typical stuff, housing and all that. Remember, November 11th is Veterans Day, so, I don't remember where that is. What I wanna bring up is, October 23rd is coming up, it's Saturday, and it's National Make a Difference Day. And what it's supposed to be is just a time to go out and do some volunteer work, and it could be anything. Just to give you an example of one of the things they could do, one of the groups that's close to my heart is Access Housing. I actually went into my closet and found that there were some clothes in there that cleaners had shrunk, that I couldn't stretch back out, and took it down to Access Housing, and they use it for the people that come through the program to help them dress up for interviews and stuff like that. Something as simple as that, but if you just take a little bit of time on the 23rd and go out and just do something nice, maybe it's, maybe you have a senior in your neighborhood who maybe has a hard time getting their long cut or whatever, you know, you go over and just give them a hand so they can run a yard, but it's a great program, and, you know, it's just one of those nice things to do. Mr. Murray, do you have something else?
Just one more thing to add to the calendar. November 13th will be the grand reopening of the library, Commerce City.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, because I don't have that anyplace on my list. November 13th?
November 13th, uh, let's see what time, it'll be from 1:00 to 6:00, it looks like. It'll be a full-day event, and, yeah, it's gonna be phenomenal. If you've been out there, I mean...
There is gonna be a play, right? There is gonna be a play.
I'm sure, there is, yeah. But yes, if you've, if you've seen it recently, I mean, you'll know that it's just gonna be great.
Mr. Clary, if you would make sure that gets on our calendars, because that's stuff that's really important. Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Bullock, you have something else?
Oh, yes, oh, just a matter, you said, Herring Square, and it's...
Yeah, don't go to Herring Square, because they won't be open.
I know, that you like, what are you doing here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I appreciate council keeping me on my toes during these crazy times of medicine and physical therapy, I get to go in the morning. They stuck more pins in my body than I ever thought they could find, and stretched me, I'm almost a sick one now, they've been doing such a good job. If there be no further business to come for this board, councilor will be off, and you wanna just, does anybody have a break?
No.
Okay, we're going right into it.
I need one minute.
Okay, we have one minute. Anybody have a funny joke that you can tell the audience, or anything else you'd like to just bring up?
I have an announcement on the calendar.
There you go.
To Ms. Snyder, Ms. Carson, and myself, tomorrow night is Women in Wine, and it is actually a professional, women that are invited all around the front page, you know, we have Ferguson, it's the, yeah, Wednesday, sorry. But it is a lot of networking and all, we exchange business cards, and then we have coffee and stuff like that. It is just all winey, but anyway.
It should be Women with Wine.
I actually, I want all of you to know that one of our staff turned an ancient old year of 35 yesterday.
And he's not even here.
And he's here, I'm guessing, for the...
I know. So...
When Misses Murphy?
Yesterday.
Aww.
Yeah. Anybody got any drink? Anybody?
I'm ready when you are, sir.
Okay, we're ready then. Okay, Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District meeting. Of October 18th, 2010, not under order, the secret, please call it roll.
And for those council board members that aren't aware, we don't have a board set up for this, so this will be done with voice voting, voice roll call hanging there. There should be no lights flashing.
Okay.
President Towns.
Here.
Vice President Snyder.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Benson.
Here.
Board Member Carson.
Here.
Board Member Teeter.
Here.
Board Member Johnson. Board Member Mc, Board Member McElhenney.
Here.
Board Member Bullock.
Here.
Sir, leave now, please.
Okay. There is one set of minutes before the GID board this evening for approval of the minutes of the meeting of May 24th, 2010. Before voting on the minutes, I need a motion to allow Board Member Marine to abstain from voting because of excused absence, Mr. McElhenney. Is the motion? Ms. Teeter.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to allow Board Member Marine to abstain from voting on the minutes of May 24th. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, now, voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2010, Ms. Snyder.
Yes, for the approval of regular meeting minutes, May 24th, 2010, board as seated.
Ms. Teeter.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2010, is there any discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I did note, or excuse me, Mr. President Towns, I did notice some corrections that I'll need to make, to be fair administratively, as far as council versus board members. So, those have been corrected in the minutes.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Okay. There's one public hearing scheduled for this evening. Open the public hearing on Resolution 2010-08, the City Management Area Fund increases by a step up to review the resolution of the 2,000 trillion budget. I think registered. You did it all this time. Mr. Jacob Burris is presenting the side. All right. We haven't seen you in a while. Been there.
Good to be here, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. President, and Board Directors. The General Fund Improvement District, or General Improvement District, not General Fund, General Improvement District has a budget of $5,303,899 for 2011. Of that, $4.6 million goes for bond issues, so the primary purpose of the General Improvement District is to repay debt that has been issued to pay for public improvements in the northern range. The remaining, the loans are for administrative costs, and of that, $557,000 is budgeted for water acquisition. And that will come not from tax revenues, but from other miscellaneous revenues such as investment earnings. And then the plan for 2012 is a budget of $5.2 million, and of that, $4,763,000 would be for debt service again. Are there any questions regarding this? I should add also, I'm sorry, that this would leave the mill levy at .7 million, which were past members of the show.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this particular item, council? Seeing none, I agree, entertain a motion, Mr. McElhenney. Move to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, sir. Yes, I'm ahead of myself. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address count, as the board on this particular item? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, Resolution 2010-08, to November 1st, 2010, to provide a public time to review the document, address the board on November 1st, 2010, before final condition, adoption, Mr. McElhenney. But to repeat, some, okay, Ms. Snyder.
Second motion.
The move is seconded to continue the public hearing through on Resolution 2010-08. Voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. There be no further business to come for this board, we will adjourn. Everybody drive safe. I have one thing I forgot to say, congratulations to Mr. Bullock, for earning Diamond, Quinlan?
Diamond.
Diamond, with National Lead Cities. Nice job. You all have good evenings, drive safe.
I could have just smarted that one, there, right? You don't have to. Definitely. So, we put this up here. Okay, I'll tag it on.
Okay. I'll tag it on. Yeah. Tell them, just, come tomorrow, I'll go back to them, and we'll come back. It's been sharing, it's been, it's been...
I know, but we're on it for a long time.